Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please? You're muted, my dear. You're all muted.
Sorry.
Okay.
All five selectmen present, as well as the town administrator and town council.
Thank you very much. I believe Mr. Bowen is going to lead us this evening.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, what we stand for, one nation, under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trivia. When was the phrase "under God" added to the pledge?
Nineteen fifty-six.
Uh, in the Jewish calendar, four thousand one hundred and thirty-two.
Okay, announcements. I'm going to go to Peter first, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah, uh, kind of announcements and I guess comments as well. On Saturday, Alan and I had the pleasure of doing the coin toss for the Tigers. Three playoff games, home playoff games at Spillane Field. They had a nice crowd. The kids are very well coached. They're very respectful. They don't even rise to provocations from the other teams. The coaches have them playing very disciplined ball. The cheerleaders are very energetic. They're also respectful of the opponents, and it's a really nice organization. But two of the three squads did, in fact, win, and they're going on to their league championship games, and those are going to be on Sunday, November twenty-first. The mites, which are the smallest kids, are playing at ten AM in West Bridgewater. And at eleven-thirty, the midgets, which are the larger kids, are playing again West Bridgewater, one fifty-five Center Street, West Center Street, I'm sorry. And I hope people show up and support their local athletes.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven? Announcements?
The only thing I have really, Veterans Day, we had an okay turnout. I was hoping for more people to show up. Everything went off well. I have to thank the Wareham Fire Department and the Wareham Police Department for bringing vehicles there. I have to apologize to the Onset Fire Department. When I was asked to arrange for two, I just went brain dead, I guess, and just thought Wareham and invited the Wareham Fire Department. So I have to apologize to Onset Fire Department because I did not invite them. That was wrong, especially when this event was in the area. So again, to Chief Oswald and Onset Fireman, I apologize for not getting, reaching out to you. Won't happen again, senior moment. And the event went really well. Representative Gifford was there, Senator Pacheco was there, and it was really well run. It was a nice little meal afterwards, and everybody had a nice time. Hopefully, we'll have maybe a hundred people, you know, from the town show up and show their appreciation for the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Munees, any announcements, sir?
You're back up pronouncing his name wrong.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Mr. Munees? Announcements?
Seeing Mr. Slaven talk about Veterans Day, I went over the festivities. It was very good. Speakers were good, and the food was great. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Tropiano?
Nothing.
Okay. I just want to make one announcement, and that is that we do have a revised document for the licensing of Class One, Two, and Three car salespeople. Those were sent to you today. Also, all of the car dealers were sent a letter reminding them of the law, which is that they must have a $25,000 bond payable on top of their regular insurance. So I'm guessing that there may be some people who are unhappy with that. However, it is the law, and we cannot renew those licenses until those documents are in our hand. I just wanted to let you gentlemen know that and let the public know that as well. Okay, citizens' comments. I don't see anybody raising their hand. All right, then we will move on to boards. Actually. Yeah, board comments, go ahead. Jim?
Um, I know we've had some, we have a topic on the agenda stemming from town, while town meeting, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can maybe go over birth removal, if there's a spot on the, within the agenda, time slots for it. That would just be moving us a little forward on each one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Uh, just two things, gonna make comments on. One is, I don't know if people had a chance, I was not able to make the school department there all day budget hearings. I had other things going on, and, but I have to thank Mrs. Shaverhood. She basically printed out copies of everything that was presented, so I was able to go over the amount that they're, in theory, asking for in a perfect world, but I think it was thirty-six million, I think it was thirty-six million dollars or something like that. Is what they were looking at, some, whatever the number was, I think it was thirty-six. So I started to look at some of the expenses, probably gonna get myself in trouble as usual, but there seems to be a disconnect between what we pay on the town side and what we pay on the school side for similar jobs and stuff, and obviously not teachers. I always felt teachers were underpaid from day one. So it's just something that I noticed, and it's something that maybe we should look at because some of the discrepancies are really quite a bit, the difference to me is kind of amazing, actually. I won't go into the details, but it's something that we should look at. It's not the town side that has the highest salary. And the other thing is, I had a meeting today, actually yesterday, and finished up with it. Commuter rail was on the agenda for me. Basically, it's being run by the Cape Cod Commissioners, was assigned to run the Cape Rail program, and the discussion was simply, I mentioned it last week, what I had seen for a draft, and the way it stands right now, it was just, it's been left that they made no decision, yes and no, alternative one or alternatives two, which is Buzzes Bay or the other side of the bridge in Vaughan. And it was kind of left that the, it would be a fourteen daily trips or, you know, twenty. What really was kind of disappointing is that Mr. Tupper, who was in charge of the Cape Cod Commission, sent me a personal email, if you want to call it that, because I kind of complained that they didn't come up with any final answers for a recommendation, that most likely, and it's disappointing to me, is that if something gets approved, it would be a pilot program, and I don't know if people remember, there was a pilot program potentially mentioned some years ago, probably at least six, I think, which was pulled out before we could actually get it initiated. And that pilot means it'd probably be a year to eighteen months of just trying some version of a commuter rail to make a decision whether it's viable or not. So as of right now, I'm disappointed to say that we're looking at, at best, a commuter pilot program and not a full-blown, full-blown program immediately, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum? None? Okay, Mr. Tropiano?
I have nothing.
Thank you. I have nothing. I'm going to ask that we skip down to something that we actually did last week, but it's item ten C, the Wareham Village Association Christmas Parade, and if we could have Tracy McGraw join us. I'm asking that we do this because she has a commitment that she must get to. So if you could let Ms. McGraw on, that would be fine. As you remember, gentlemen, we approved this last week because we didn't want it to fall too close within the thirty-day window, but we did want to hear from Ms. McGraw. Good evening, Tracy, how are you?
Good evening, I'm well, how are you all?
Good, thank you. We approved your application last week, but we want to have you have the opportunity to tell us a little bit about what you're planning for December fourth.
And I appreciate that approval very much, as you all well know. So I met with the police department and the fire department for an hour each, working out some kinks and making sure that this runs smooth. We expect an epic turnout because of the world and that we're allowed to do this. So we're very excited. We do have a proposition for all of you, however. We would like the Board of Selectmen as a body to be our town crier for this parade. We would, we, I have secured a cloak and a bell for one of you, and the others could walk, handing out the candy as you so love to do. So if you sit, why are you laughing at me, Judy?
Do you know what town criers dress in?
Yes.
You're gonna make one of these guys dress up like that?
Or one of the girls?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, a chance to help.
This is, our proposition is that we would love this board to be our, the town criers for the parade. I think it's perfectly fitting. I think you guys would have a ball with it. You get to walk, hand out your candy. If you do want to have Alan have a vehicle in the parade, these are the, these are the conditions. The vehicle cannot stop at all during the parade. So you're welcome to enter a vehicle, but it cannot stop. So if you want to be walking and handing out candy, I'm asking, the board, my board is asking of you, the police and the fire, everyone's asking of you. I'm sorry, please walk beside your vehicle. The vehicle's gonna continue moving through the parade, so if you want to mingle with the crowd, that's fantastic, but the vehicle will continue to move, which is why we came up with the idea of town crier. I think it couldn't be more soothing that this organization be the town crier for this parade.
Thank you, Ms. McGraw, really. I guess we should all talk with Claire Smith and find out what kind of costumes we can beg, borrow, and steal from her. Now, let me pick your head up.
Like I said, I secured a cloak and a big old bell from the, um...
History of the society?
Thank you, yes. But if you want to jazz it up with costumes for all of you, that would be even better. You would be the front runners, obviously, of the parade. You would go before the police or the honor guards, police and fire honor guards. As you know, the town criers go in front of the whole parade, and here ye, here ye, here we come. What do you say?
Alan shaking his head. Jim has leaned back in his chair and is hoping that, hoping that we don't think this is a great idea. Come on, Jim, smile.
Great idea, great opportunity, you guys.
Alan, you have a question?
We'll figure something out.
Yeah, we will. Alan, do you have a question?
No, this old body's not gonna make that, that deal at all. I'll be driving my sixty-four Thunderbird sports rosters I just put together so they can walk alongside and throw the candy from there if they want.
There's no throwing candy, that was your rule. Hand the candy.
Well, it's not my rule.
It was the Board of Selectmen's rule.
Thank you.
Um, to, I didn't, but it'd be, I just meant, I speak to you as a board, Alan. I wasn't meaning to single you out, but that's great if you want to enter that vehicle and be in it. The only thing is, you can't stop it.
I have a special gun I made to launch candy, at least fifty feet, there's a hundred feet.
Go on. No, that won't work, according to the Board of Selectmen.
Judy, put that on the agenda.
Okay. We already have an ATV this year that the fire department is donating, and we're gonna have a couple of people drop in that during the parade to ensure that the parade moves, that there's no stopping, and that merchants' ways smoke, runs smoothly, and everybody gets all the way up to the fire department because it's, we have more entrance than we had last year already.
Good, excellent.
Couple of weeks away.
I can't use my water cannon?
No, Mr. Slaven, stop now. All right, do you have anything else to ask of us, Ms. McGraw?
I do not, I'm just asking for an answer from you so that I can move forward with you all being the town crier.
Gentlemen, how say ye?
Well, we'll be there, we'll figure it out like Peter said.
We'll, we'll, we'll figure it out soon. We won't leave you hanging. I know you have to plan the parade and who's gonna lead it, whether it's gonna be the honor guard or us, so.
We'll figure it out in the next few days.
Come on, guys, don't you, front of the honor guards, like, that's such an honor.
We'll, we'll get back to you within the next few days.
I love a parade.
Thank you very much.
I like watching a parade.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, I move, we open tax levy hearing at seven fifteen.
Thanks, Tracy.
Is there a second to that motion, please? I have a motion to open the tax levy hearing at seven fifteen. And a second, I'm going to go for a roll call vote. Please let Jackie Nichols into the meeting. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Still recovering from the town cry, yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is now open, and we will be hearing from Jackie Nichols, our assessor, as soon as she is let in. I believe she has a PowerPoint, and you also got a copy of what she will be saying.
Yes.
Discussing. Good evening, Ms. Nichols, how are you?
Good evening. Is Michelle with us, because she's got to record the vote?
Oh, okay. Please let Michelle Bissonette in then as well, please. Thank you. Michelle, please unmute yourself. All right, the hearing is open. Go ahead, Ms. Nichols, with your presentation.
Good evening. I'm going to jump straight to the PowerPoint and just walk you through that, if I may. Maybe? Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. This evening, we are here for the tax classification levy hearing, which is something we do every year. This PowerPoint is basically very similar to the documentation that I sent you, I believe, yesterday. Please stop me if you have any questions as I go along. We have received final approval for our values, so the vote taken tonight will be the final vote. And just a reminder that the classes of property that we're talking about are the residential classes and the commercial, industrial, and personal property. They are grouped together. Residential includes a single-family condos, mobile homes, multifamily apartments and residential land, and the CIP, Commercial, Industrial, and Personal Property, includes office and retail, industrial manufacturing, commercial and industrial is own land, chapter land, and personal property, both business and second homes. The purpose of the hearing is to determine whether the town will continue to utilize a single tax rate for all of the classes of property or to split the rate, shifting the burden toward the commercial, industrial, and personal property from the residential class. As we've discussed in the past, eighty percent residential versus twenty percent CIP share of the overall property makeup is considered the minimum division at which to begin to consider a split tax rate. This is due to the fact that with a CIP share lower than twenty percent, any shift results in a very small benefit to the residential and a larger burden for the CIP taxpayer without proper support from the tax base. As you can see, for fiscal year 2022, we are pretty much the same as we were last year and last few years at eighty-three point six versus sixteen point four for our CIP ratio. I have been keeping the, the records since I got here, and I'm showing here from 2010. And as you can see, there hasn't been a whole lot of meaningful change in our overall makeup. And this is a graph that kind of shows that visually. If you want me to slow down, just let me know, because we all know I can get going quickly. As you can see from the above chart, our res-to-CIP ratios remain steady. And for fiscal 2022, our average single-family residential value has risen to $323,000. Our average commercial is seven sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, and the average industrial value is 694,000. I rounded these to the nearest thousand for our PowerPoint here. Last year, the average single-family was 305, average commercial was 707, and the average industrial value was 691. I've used the FY22 average single-family residential and commercial value as the benchmarks for our shift illustration. This chart kind of shows you an example of what an approximation would be if we were to shift the tax rate. At the lowest shift point of 1.1, the residential property would save $68 annually, but the commercial bill would go up $781. At the highest rate, the residential property would save $346, but the commercial bill would go up almost $4,000, $38.95, give or take. Again, these are approximations based on information that I received, that I get off of the Department of Revenue website utilizing our numbers. Are there any questions about what we're seeing here? Again, I've charted this out so you can see how that works. So in summary, the split rate doesn't necessarily increase our overall revenue. It just shifts the tax burden within the different classes of properties. A shift would make Wareham less attractive to new development and small business relocation. It would also impact summer cottage residences, their personal property taxes would increase. Many of our town's commercial properties are leased, and landlords typically pass the increases on to tenants, which impacts our smaller businesses, which are typically locally owned. Business personal property would also be taxed at the higher rate. So not only would we be raising the rate on the commercial properties, but also on the business owners as well. I've also put in here some community comparisons from the Department of Revenue, and this is showing all of the 2021 information because obviously 2022 has not happened for everybody yet, as far as everybody's having their, their classification hearings right around the same time we are. So for 2021, we show the single family, the number of single-family parcels, the average single-family value, and the average single-family tax bill. I will note that in our particular case, yes, ours is much lower, but this is just the town rate we're talking about here. Okay, so we do have to add in our district rates depending on where we live. Does anybody have any question about this one? Okay, and then we also have, just for informational purposes, a history of our average single-family values, industrial values, and commercial values, just for your information. And that's basically it.
Thank you. Does any one of you have any questions? And if you do, please raise your hand, let me know, because obviously you need to go through me. Alan, you're all set?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, Judy. The, if you look at it, we're basically, the last couple of years, we've gone up a little bit more toward the residential than the commercial. It's not the direction we were hoping to go because we're looking to get to the eighty-twenty, where we could start to show some kind of savings to the residents. But right now, unfortunately for me anyways, looking at this, I think it'd be putting an unusual burden on commercial and also the summer residents because of the property, the personal property tax, et cetera. Any change would be so insignificant, it really wouldn't make much of a difference at all at this point. And with the demand on residential properties and stuff, the values should start to show, they've already shown an increase more than the, than the commercial. Maybe at that point, they have, maybe there's something that we can do. But if you look at the average tax bill, even putting the district charges, et cetera, Wareham on an average tax bill is, because of the property values, obviously, as well, we're substantially under everybody else, which affects actually what we have available to spend on our budgets and stuff, and you can see the difference now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, any questions or comments?
Uh, no, we follow the deal, we follow the Department of Revenue's guidance, I think, since I first got on the board, and I think it makes sense to continue to do so. I agree with Alan. This isn't the time to be trying to throw additional burdens at our businesses. You know, they're trying to come out of the pandemic, too. I don't, I don't feel that's appropriate at this time, so I would stick with the one-to-one split.
Thank you. Mr. Munees?
What was, what was the rate last year? What will the rate be this year for a thousand?
Um, the rate last year was... I believe it was eleven sixteen last year.
Yeah.
And this year, we're looking at... Ten eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven, yeah. And how do we do on capital growth?
We did well.
We got a lot, or I mean, what's well? Do we know yet?
Yes, our growth was 469,000, I believe. That's coming off the top of my head, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're all set, Mr. Munees?
Yeah, yeah, I just...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tropiano, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
You.
You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, no, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. And I'm all set. I will accept a motion to close the hearing. There's no further discussion.
Second.
I'm sorry, which one of you made the motion?
Patrick.
Patrick made the motion, and Mr. Titlebaum seconded it to close the hearing. I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The hearing is closed. I will now accept a motion.
I move to adopt a residential factor of one for fiscal year 2022.
Is there a second to Mr. Tropiano's motion?
Okay.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to adopt a residential factor of one for the fiscal year 2022? I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The vote is five zero zero. I believe we're all set.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, Madam Chair, one thing I just want to point out is, new growth of 469,000 is about 100,000 less than what we had the previous year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Declined.
Ms. Bissonette, do you have anything that we need to do for you? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much, ladies. We will move on to licenses. We have no appointments, reappointments, or interviews, so we'll move on to licenses and permits.
I have an application from Onset Bay Association, PO Box 799, Onset, Mass, to use town property for Christmas in the Village event taking place Saturday, December eleventh, 2021, from twelve to three.
Okay, and I think we have Kat Jones here to represent them. Would you let her in, please? She's there.
Hi there.
Hi there, how are you?
I'm well. How's everybody?
Good.
Well, we were better. We were better before we got asked to be bell ringers in a play. I mean, a parade.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Hear what I want to ask you. I'm just kidding. I think that's a fitting tribute. I think that would be great.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Okay.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what you have planned for your December eleventh program?
Absolutely. So we've been running Christmas in the Parks for many, many years now. I want to say close to twenty years. It's gone through a lot of changes, a lot of evolution over the years. This year, we're scaling back just a little bit. We won't offer all of the same things that we normally do, just because of, you know, factors, you know, it's it's been a tough year for everybody. So we're trying to get back to a more organic kind of event. So far, we have Soleranos is going to host Santa, which of course is always a big deal. Patrick Marshall, who is on our board, but also, as you know, runs the library, is offering us to use Spiny Library and Onset for a kid's activity, most likely cookie decorating, storytelling, that kind of stuff. We have various other businesses that will be either offering some kind of special or a treat of some sort. One thing that we want to do is ask of the business community to maybe, you know, step up a little bit and and offer something. And it can be anything. It doesn't have to be a free thing. It could be a special you might be running at a restaurant or, you know, get creative. We're really asking the village to really pull together. We would like permission to erect the lobster trap Christmas tree once again. That's a pillow my mother made of the tree that we put together last year. Even though Kat Garofoli is no longer with the Onset Bay Center, she has agreed to help out with that project. And one thing we wanted to do in addition to just setting up the lobster trap tree itself is have a station of hot chocolate ornament making, where you could actually make an ornament or create an ornament of some type. We're working on the design of that, that you can actually place on the lobster trap tree or by a volunteer. A volunteer will be there to place the ornament on the tree. And then we also thought we'd have a community sing-along. We couldn't get the caroling group that we normally get. We weren't really sure what was going to happen this year. So that's another reason we're kind of scaling back and getting, trying to just do a more organic event, if you will. So the bare bones of it, we'll have the lobster trap tree with your permission, of course. And I we will need volunteers to help build that. It was a lot of fun last year, and I really felt like this contraption was a beacon of hope for everybody in a time when we really needed it. You know, I can't tell you how many pictures I saw or how many times, you know, the OBA and the Coalition got tagged on social media. People were just really uplifted by this simple, simple creation that a lot of coastal towns do. And it was time for Onset to have a lobster trap tree. I think I think you can all agree. So right now, you know, because the Onset Fire Department moved out of town, they will still be involved in some way. Soleranos will host Santa. Spiny Library will have a kid's activity. DeVito Realty will be be giving out gifts. And anybody that wants to get involved, we welcome, we welcome you to get involved. The Clay Room is a new business in town. They would like to be involved. We also have the folks from the Bridge Church that's on Highland Avenue. They're hosting an event at their church, appropriate for Christmas, of course. It's called a Night in Bethlehem, and that's from noon to three. That's going to be part of the festivities on the eleventh. So it's it's more or less a holiday stroll. We opted not to do the horse and cart this year, only because, you know, you can't really distance on a we still think social distancing should be a thing. Kind of hard to arrange this late in the game, also getting getting the horse and cart. So we're kind of just simplifying this year and asking more businesses to step forward and maybe offer a little something. And we can certainly help you out with that. We have things, you know, we have little toys and things to give away. We have candy cane markers that we put in front of all the different activity spots around the village. So basically, it's, you know, our little community Christmas event, and she's chugging along.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. First of all, Mr. Sullivan would have to be the individual to give you the permission for the lobster trap tree, because that's on town property. But in your application, you said kids' activities offered at various businesses around the village, horse-drawn cart rides leave from the pier every twenty minutes. So that is no longer part of your plans.
Not this year, unfortunately, just because of time time constraints.
Okay, Santa arrives for socially photos, or is he going to be sitting someplace? You've frozen. Now you're really frozen.
Of Soleranos. Can you hear me now? Am I bad connection? So at Soleranos, they decorate for the holidays, and they put up this gorgeous, you know, tree for everyone to enjoy. And so there'll be a chair to offer Santa to do to do photos. Indoors with the kids, we would like people to wear masks. You know, we're not going to ask for your vaccination cards. We just want people to have a good time, so.
And you also said the strollers are not, the carolers are not going to be strolling around the village.
They're really, they're really busy this year, so we figured our community.
Okay, good. All right, gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Slaven?
None, thank you.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Nope.
Uh, Mr. Manis?
No, sounds good.
Cool. Mr. Tropiano?
No, I'm all set.
And myself, I have no questions. I'll accept a motion.
All right, I move that we approve the application of Onset Bay Association, P.O. Box seven nine nine, Onset, Mass., for the use of town property, a use of town property for Christmas in the Village event taking place Saturday, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, from twelve to three.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. I'm going for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so it's five zero zero. And again, Ms. Jones, you'll have to deal with Mr. Sullivan on whether you can put the pots up, but I'm sure he'll say yes.
I will. I'll reach out to him directly. And if a town prior costume is not your thing, I have a Christmas tree costume, a snowman costume, and a star. So if any of you want to wear one of those costumes on the eleventh, come on down.
Can we wear them on the fourth? Can we borrow them for the fourth as well?
Sure.
I don't, I don't see why not.
We'll talk with you. Excellent. Now, goodbye. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next two items on the agenda are, one is a certificate of recognition and the other is a certificate of appreciation. The first one is for Raymond and Alfreda Cardoza. Alfreda and Ray, who were married, unfortunately Alfreda is deceased, were longtime volunteers and people who elected officials in the town of Wareham. And their daughter has asked that we recognize their achievements. Unfortunately, Mr. Cardoza Ray is, he's eighty-eight, good for him. And he's in a nursing home, and sometimes he may be able to see this as his daughter will be recording it. So I will read it to you guys and to the public. This is a certificate of recognition for Raymond Cardoza and Alfreda Cardoza. Whereas Alfreda Cardoza served the town of Wareham as an assessor from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen seventy-eight. Whereas Alfreda Cardoza served the town of Wareham as a member of the Selectmen's Executive Committee for Wareham Economic Development. Whereas Alfreda Cardoza served the town of Wareham as a member of the Buzzards Bay RFD Mail Delivery Committee from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen seventy-eight. Whereas Raymond Cardoza served on the Wareham Housing Authority Trust from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy-two. Whereas Raymond Cardoza served the town of Wareham as a member of the Sewerage Works Building Committee from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen seventy-four. Whereas Raymond Cardoza served the town of Wareham as a member of the Finance Committee in nineteen seventy-one. Whereas Raymond Cardoza served the town of Wareham as an assessor from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-two. Whereas Raymond Cardoza served as a member of Southeastern Massachusetts Regional Planning Board in nineteen seventy-one. And whereas Raymond Cardoza served the town of Wareham as a cemetery commissioner from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-four, seventy-seven. Whereas Raymond Cardoza served the town of Wareham on the Cable TV Advisory Committee from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen seventy-six. Whereas Raymond Cardoza served as a selectman for the town of Wareham from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-seven. Whereas it is believed that Raymond Cardoza was the first member of the Cape Verdean community to serve in a senior elected official position in any town in the United States. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen recognizes the community service provided by Mr. and Mrs. Raymond Cardoza over the years, and thanks them for their commitment to community. We, the Wareham Board of Selectmen, have hereunto set our hands and caused the official seal of the town of Wareham to be affixed the sixteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-one, signed by the Board of Selectmen Judith Whiteside Chair, Patrick G. Tropiano Clerk, James M. Manis, Alan H. Slaven, and Peter W. Titlebaum Esquire. Nice, yeah. They really did, as you can hear from the certificate, years and years and years, and all sorts of things. I'd forgotten about the Buzzards Bay RFD Mail Delivery Committee. Did you even remember that one, anybody?
No.
Okay. Are the Barringers here?
Yes.
Would you let them in, please? And was Ms. Dooley here? I don't, I forgot to look.
No, I don't see anybody by that name.
Yeah, she wasn't here. Okay. Okay. Can we see you Barringers, please?
We can hear them.
We can hear you, yeah.
Put your pants back on. Oh, boy.
Yeah.
There we go. Set us.
Yeah, I think so. Sorry.
It's okay.
So, Steve, oh, we know. Oh, boy.
Should I get Brianna?
Sorry. Well.
We can. We can read it to you.
That would be beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a certificate of appreciation to Stephen Barringer and Teresa Barringer. Whereas the Barringers have continuously participated in a Stuff a Bus toy drive benefiting Turning Point. Whereas the Barringers sponsored a program for Wareham middle school students, which empowers them to feel proud about being substance-free. Whereas the Barringers have provided free Thanksgiving meals over the years for those in need. Whereas the Barringers sponsored a fundraiser for firefighter David Wallstrom. Whereas the Barringers have hosted Celebration of Life fundraisers for many individuals over the years. Whereas for ten years, the Barringers have hosted Jacob's Motorcycle Run in Benefit in recognition of his nephew, who was diagnosed with a rare form of cancer at age three. Whereas the Barringers have demonstrated through their actions and generosity what it means to be a member of a community. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen award this certificate of appreciation to Steve and Teresa Barringer in recognition of their years of generous community support and wish them well in their retirement. We, the Board of Selectmen, have hereunto set our hands and caused the official seal of the town of Wareham to be affixed the sixteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-one. Board of Selectmen Judith Whiteside Chair, Patrick G. Tropiano Clerk, Jim M. Manis, Alan H. Slaven, and Peter W. Titlebaum Esquire. And thank you.
Thank you so, so very much. Quite an honor.
It's been an honor to have you as a member of our community. The gentlemen, we need to sign this documentation, document will be in our office for the Board of Selectmen to sign, because I don't think we've all signed it. But then we can either mail it to you, or you can pick it up, whichever you choose.
Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Okay, we're now down to a discussion and vote on the boundary reprecincting changes. Who's doing that? Is it Michelle or?
Hey, you want to bring?
Is it Michelle?
No, actually, this, I don't think she stuck around for this. This was just based upon the state alterations for the precincts. So I know she did reach out to Howie Smith because he was the last person to perambulate the bounds to at least make sure that we were talking about the exterior of the town correctly. You know, we're redistricting Plymouth or Carver or anybody like that. So this is just basically, these strikeouts get rid of language like a non-visible boundary, because that doesn't really work in a meets and bounds declaration. You can't talk about what you can't see, really. So they struck out all of that. And then there's certain adjustments here and there to certain precincts. You know, they also talked about, uh, let's see, what else we got? Other non-visible boundaries. It's just about all non-visible boundaries in here that were struck out, so. It's pretty much what it is. It's just a formality for us to vote this. This is what the state told us to do.
Okay, I think we actually talked about it two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And this is the specifics.
Move approval.
Move to approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zero zero. Thank you. Discussion and possible vote to reconfirm the OPEB funding policy from, it would be twenty twenty, it would be twenty-one, one, because it would be a new policy for this year.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to talk to this. So there's no, when you talk about the policy of following the Commonwealth's plan, do you mean the the plan for the Plymouth County Retirement System? Which been approved by the Commonwealth, because we haven't had one approved for the town.
Mr. Sullivan, do you choose to answer the question?
I don't know what you're speaking about. I'm sorry. It's, we had, when I brought, in September twenty-first, I brought before the Board of Selectmen that when we fully fund the pension liability, the the board would say that at that time, we would start putting the savings from that towards the OPEB liability. And I didn't put this on the agenda. I didn't request it, but it's made its way back on. I think I thought you'd already approved this, so.
We had not. I went back, yeah, I went back to all of the meetings where it was mentioned, and it was never voted on.
Okay, so.
So it does need to be voted on, because it's something.
What we put together, I don't have the, the language, but I said it at that meeting, so I don't know.
Do you want me to read you the language? It should be in the packet.
I, I have the language.
Yeah.
So what I'm asking is, um, it says to follow the Commonwealth Funding Policy for Providing Pension Funding Scheduling to our Retirement System. So that would be through the Plymouth County Retirement System and the schedule they've set up to complete this by twenty twenty nine, am I correct?
Yeah, that's what would be. What they're, um, they've, they've set their policies, they've set their guidelines to have the liabilities. In other words, the excess pension liabilities have that fully funded by twenty twenty nine.
Right, so, um, we also have a OPEB and stabilization, stabilization policy that we did in seventeen. But, you know, utilizing free cash and, um, hundred thousand should be transferred to free cash for stabilization. To maintain it at five percent and twenty-five percent of the remainder of certi- certified free cash should be transferred to OPEB Trust Fund. That's policy number thirteen oh four, signed by the members of this board, except for myself. Do we, do we follow that at all? The twenty-five percent of the certified free cash?
No, we haven't, because that's, that would have been, uh, excessive, if you will. We've been doing three hundred thousand. Because at that point, when you had the remainder of what we were putting before, it was roughly about three hundred thousand. So I think it's a good point to, to take a look at that again and, uh, migrate that one with our free cash, because there's two things we're talking about. One is free cash and the other is this.
Right.
Right, and, 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 and we both of them talk about OPEB.
Right, you can have.
Yeah, so I just, I, I, like you're saying, you know, migrate them together somehow and take a look at them. I don't have anything against what you're proposing. I was just trying to clarify it. And, um, so I looked up the, the Commonwealth's plan, which, you know, of course, because we're Plymouth County, Wareham doesn't have their own. And I was just confirming what I thought was, um, correct. Thank you.
Thank you. I think your point is well taken. I went back and found that exact same policy that you did and I thought, I know we are not following that policy, so I think it's proper to bring it back at a future meeting and, and, uh, and suggest different language and I'll work with Mr. Sullivan on that, if that's okay with you. So now I'm going to go for, um.
And again, and again, it's a policy, right, Jim?
Yes, it is, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
I'm going to go for a, a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven.
Yes.
Mr. Manese.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tropiano.
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum.
Yes.
And myself, yes, so it's five zero zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion and vote to appoint a custodian for the upcoming auctions, Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Bowen, which one of you is doing this one?
Um, I would be the custodian for it. Those, uh, Mr. Foster's request, this is how we've handled it, uh. It's always, so basically, I'm the person that says yay or nay. If, uh, the auction says ten cents, you say yeah, nay, and, uh, if it says, yeah, no, um, a million bucks, you say yay.
Okay, so I would accept a motion. Go ahead.
The town administrator has the custodian for the upcoming auction.
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
Just a quick question. Have we come up with a, um, a value on the Everett School yet? Did you, did we look into that?
We are getting the appraisal done, so it should be, uh, I have somebody that's, uh, proposed to be in there on the twenty-second to do the appraisal, have it done before the ninth. That is going, that auction's going to be pushed off. That appraisal would need to be done before the, uh, before the auction, set it up through the, uh, through the thirty B guidelines. So this is really for the, uh, five, was it Five Apple Street, I believe?
I think so, yes.
That's it, just the Five Apple Street?
Yeah, because with, uh, and I don't think it's worth pushing it off, uh, to, to still have them together. I just, but I do want to I get Everett done sooner rather than later.
Okay, great. Motion in a second. And I will now go for a roll call vote, which would be to appoint Mr. Sullivan as the custodian. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zero zero. Next on the agenda is a review and update on one seventy-three Main Street, Wareham Mass. I'm going to be talking to this, because I had a long conversation with several people. We got in the mail last week notification that, um, there was some residual gasoline, uh, contamination on this property. This property is under purchase and sale and will be sold by the end of the year. Several years ago, there was a gas tank leak in the adjacent property and because of the high tides. One seventy-three was contaminated, part of the Cumberland's property was contaminated. And certainly the gas station was, as well as part of the roadways of the town of Wareham. All of the remediation was taken care of. The bank that is providing the financing for the purchaser required that new test borings be made. And that is why we got the letter. There is no action that we need to take. It does not indicate that there's any further contamination to town property. It's simply to that one individual property, which is under purchase and sale agreement with a closing bef- before the end of this year. And that's all I can tell you. Yes, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, what the, uh, what the one seventy-three Main Street property, which is, uh, it, it's where the Riverside Cafe is, uh, there's a dog groomer and there's several businesses. What they actually did was, in the process of doing the environmental due diligence for the bank, uh, they discovered the contamination. They filed, uh, what's called a down gradient property status with the Massachusetts DEP. Basically, what it says is, we didn't do this, uh, it came from, uh, upstream, if you will. And in this case, upstream is the, the current Speedway Gas Station, which was, I forget what they called it back then in the nineties, when they did the original cleanup. You know, this, this could be, uh, one of several things could have caused this. It could be that when they initially assessed, uh, the area, they missed some spots. Could be when they assessed it, they didn't go out far enough. It could be that they missed one of the pathways, uh, from sort of an area of gasoline contamination that they didn't remediate. And it's continuing to trickle in there. So there's going to be work done there regardless. They may need to get onto town property to drill, to assess and everything else. That will involve entering into site access agreements. That's pretty standard issue stuff. I'm sure Attorney Bowen's done a bunch of those before. So, uh, there will be, probably be, be something going on down there, because they were above reportable concentrations. And where they're next to a river, they're going to be held to the highest, uh, cleanup standards. So. That's a long shot of it from the environment.
Thank you. I know that.
Madam Chair, member of the board.
Yeah.
That, you're, you're talking about the, I'm sorry, the, I missed something for a minute. That's the one right by, uh, Cumbies?
Yes.
Cumbly Farms. Okay, when they drilled their well, their testing the last time, they, it's, um, basically crushed one of our sewer lines, which cost us a substantial amount of money. So before we do anything, we need to get paid back for the cost they just, that they just cost the town and the, the ratepayers.
Well, uh, well, that, if I through you could ask, uh, this was during the most recent?
The one that the bank required?
All I know is that the, the well testing for that site, and I don't, I'm really not worried about who the owners were back then or what. Believe it's their liability, so who's ever on there, they can go back to the previous owners, go after them, but, uh, they just cost us a lot of money.
So are you, are you talking about just the recent borings within the past year?
I'm talking about, we started to see a collapsing catch base in what we thought. And when we went down there, whatever, uh, whatever testing had been done, I don't know if it's from when they did the original wells, uh, for, for testing it, but one of them went through, crushed right into our sewer line. Causing it, uh, causing basically everything to collapse down. So that was, if you remember, when we had to shut down Main Street, had to go through a whole bunch of things.
Okay. Um, might I suggest that you and Mr. Bowen and I chat about it, because I have the contact information and we could talk about it maybe tomorrow?
Yeah.
But if that, is that all right with you, Mr. Bowen, or Thursday?
Yeah, because I can't see us granting anything until that's taken care of.
There's nothing for us to grant at the moment. It's simply a notification, but I understand what you're saying. Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion and possible vote to establish the Deacon's School Study Group. We don't need to establish it. It's already been established by the town meeting vote. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, uh, there are the way the, the way the motion, uh, was amended for town meeting, if I remember correctly. You had three that were to be picked from the original petitioners, uh, who were listed on the Warren article when it was filed. There was a member of Capitol Planning. I think there was somebody from CPC and I forget what the third committee sort of designated slot was.
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging. And then there was a member at large, uh, to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen directly. The others, uh, were to be, you know, those committees were to make recommendations to us and then we were to, to vote on that recommendation. But the question I have is, is have we published in the newspaper, uh, the notice of vacancy, vacancy for at least the one that we're appointing? This isn't any different than, you know, you think about it, it's similar to the land use committees and that we're, we're setting up a committee here, a town meeting did, and I think we should publish it.
We have not. Take care of that tomorrow.
Of course, bulletin board, right? Of course.
Well, yeah, it'll go there, but it'll also go in the paper.
Now, the other thing too, is you don't know who amongst the petitioners are, are interested, so maybe there's a way to contact all of them and you know, see who's interested.
I think, excuse me, if I could speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Manese.
Um, I think they'll be sending the recommendations forward of the members, of the three, three members they want to recommend or more. So they'll, they'll be sending that forward to you.
They can only recommend three.
I'd have to go read, I'd have to break out the paperwork and read it, but I think you're correct, Mrs. Whiteside.
I am correct. I have the paperwork in front of me.
So, yeah, and, um.
But we will advertise, um, we will advertise, because there may be a you know, the, the one that the Board of Selectmen
Correct.
recommends by itself, um, may come from the general public, so I will get that in the paper as soon as possible. Thank you. There are some, uh, hirings that need to be ratified, Mr. Tropiano?
Uh, yes, there are. There are two, actually. Uh, ratifying Jennifer McCaffrey, Library Assistant. And Robert, okay, Meisner, Meismer?
Mersheimer.
Mersheimer, okay, Mersheimer. Move that we ratify those two.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum to ratify the hiring. Any further discussion, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Carson. Just wanted to go through real quick and, in the spirit of what we've been talking about in the holidays, there's been, uh, just sort of a, a side project, if you will, that I've been working on for a little while. And it's, you may have noticed in Bessie Park, some of the tubes going into the ground. And this would be our first, what I hope is an annual Remembrance Tree setup in Bessie Park. What, what does that mean? Well, for a twenty-five dollar donation to Damian's Pantry, you can sponsor a Remembrance Tree in Bessie Park to decorate in remembrance of a loved one. I've seen in some of the other communities, I think it's a great way to get into the holiday season to remember those that maybe we've lost or, or loved the seasons. And, uh, it's been, it's worked out pretty well in other communities. I'd love to bring it here. And we've got about seventy-three spots, uh, you know, just speaking to people, I've got at least, uh, a dozen people that are, uh, a dozen trees that have been, uh, spoken for, so. What we're going to do is set this up in the Office of the Administrator. Please give us a call, give us an email. And we'll, we'll get you going, because we want to give you the specific tree number, one through seventy-three, and, uh, get this going. We're working with one of the local, local, uh, companies that sells, uh, Christmas trees. They've give us, given us, uh, a lower cost on the trees. Um, some of the businesses we've talked to are going to help and subsidize this whole event. So I think it's something that's really neat and, uh, I'd like it to be a traction for the community and think it could be really good.
What a nice idea. And it will reflect, the lights will be reflected on the river as well.
Yeah, and I think driving in, I'm hoping people are going right along that walkway. And I just think it'd be very special for some of the kids in the community to walk through there and, uh, I've talked to, uh, Sprig Rob for the, for the parade. She was happy. They're not impacting any places that she, she was going to use and, uh, I believe they think it'll be, uh, be an asset, so, uh, you know, once we've got the, uh, the, the sponsoring companies all settled, I'd like to make sure that we put some information down, so.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a quick question? Will there be electricity there for the decorations on the trees or no?
Yeah, so Jim, what we're doing is we're going to put lights on the trees already. We'll already have them lit up, because we don't want to play around with that. And people can decorate how they, uh, how they want them. And then thereafter, what we're taking a look at, our hope is to, instead of just digging up the tubes again, is to sleeve them with, uh, some solar lights on top to keep some, uh, some solar lights along the pathway for the rest of the season, the rest of the year, until next, uh, next holiday season.
Interesting. I, I, actually, I saw that last week when I had breakfast and I walked over and I'm looking at him and saying, hmm, what we got going on here?
Couldn't figure it out, could you?
Yeah, I'm looking at him, I'm saying, well, jeez, no, no, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so Mr. Menard and his staff is always, they've come through, have already, uh, put in the tubes and, uh, we're, we're, we're pretty excited. It's I, I think as they said before, it's been, it's been a long couple of years for, for all of us, so getting, getting into the spirit and some joy is going to be really special this year, so.
Thank you. Very much appreciated. You all set?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Liaison and Initiative Reports, I will go to Mr. Manese first.
On the liaison reports, I'm, I'm quiet and on initiatives. I started going through the policies and I, I, I started going through it backwards. Because you always start from the top, so I figured I'd start from the back and, um, it refreshes me and there's, you know, I'm, I'm writing down ones we should probably get rid of and whatnot. So that's one of the initiatives that I had said. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of my seventeen.
Mr. Slaven?
Uh, let's see. As you know, we passed the, uh, restriction of selling of NIPS. Since then, I've had, uh, Marion contacting me a couple of days ago, that's Q and A round, that's number four, about trying to put forth in their town meeting a similar, uh, bylaw to see if that will pass through there, so. I'll keep everybody updated as to what communities actually go to the, follow suit to what we've done. The other thing is, I didn't mention earlier, uh, the Buzzards Bay Coalition is doing a, uh, open house, if you want to call it, over at the Horseshoe Dam for their restoration work. It's tomorrow at one o'clock, not tomorrow, it's Thursday at one o'clock. And, um, I think it's Station Street, if I remember right, number one. And I I think it's Station Street, if I remember right, number one. And I think that's all I have, really.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
The Redevelopment Authority last week did vote five zero zero to request the Selectmen to take a look at what we've negotiated so far with the Bentley Companies for a land disposition agreement for a Tremont Nail Factory. I would ask that this go on an agenda two weeks from now.
Next week?
Well.
The twenty third. You want to move it up?
Well, I I don't have an issue either way, but I thought, you know, in case the members wanted more time, but if a week is enough time for them to go through with them, then that's fine, too, but.
I I haven't seen it, so.
Yeah. It'll, it'll get out to you.
You'll get it when you, when the
Tomorrow, anyway.
No, Thurs- Thursday.
Well, I can send it out to the board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we could send it out tomorrow.
I'll send it out, so.
You would get it in the packet on Thursday.
Yeah. But you'll, you'll get, you'll get the the latest iteration of it tomorrow, but but it's up to the board. Or actually, you, Madam Chairman, as to when you want to do it.
Well, I just do it because we have all sorts of licenses for cars and alcohol coming up at the end of the year, and it's just brutal.
Okay.
And we also have a dog hearing coming up, so I'd just assume move it along, and if we have issues and questions at the meeting, we can always postpone the vote.
Chair, just to confirm, that's the LDA require, would, we'd have to go to town meeting for that one, right at the the end of that, for any sort of lease or disposition?
Well, the LDA would be conditional upon town meeting, you know, approving the actions that the LDA would cover in terms of the length of the lease. Whether it's a ninety nine or whether it's three thirty year leases, whatever form it is that goes to town meeting. Obviously, the the land transfer, you know, is contingent upon that, anyway.
Yeah, so I don't think, it's not like if we don't take action next two weeks, we're in trouble, right?
No, I mean, unless
I'd rather take it and not have it get lost in the weeds myself.
Okay. That's fine, but that's, that's all I had for liaison report.
Thank you, Mr. Torpiano.
I'm also.
Thank you. The Board of Health is continuing to look at the motel regulations, and there was some discussion at the last meeting about working with the Wareham Area Housing Trust to try and make sure that people aren't thrown out on the street. The Board of Health is very aware of the conditions of some of the people who live in this town and who have to live in motels. So those are interesting conversations. They'll be meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, Madam Chairperson, if you don't mind, one of the things that came out of there was, I believe, somebody from Father Bill's had stated that I myself had signed eviction notices for people, and the town was evi- yeah, so yeah, I don't evict people. That's, that's, it's not part of, so I do enough bad stuff that I don't need things like that being made up, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Sullivan. We all get accused of things that none of us have done, to be honest with you. Consent agenda, I don't see that we have anything to approve. So I am now going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for reason number six.
So made.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Slaven, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any further discussion? Before we take the vote, I'm going to say that we will be going into executive session. We will not be coming back to live session. We will adjourn from the executive session. Okay. Motion to go into executive session for reason number six, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Torpiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And we are now going to ask WCTV to remove everyone from the meeting, with the exception of the five Selectmen, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Bowen. So we will be in like a two or three minute recess, gentlemen.